Welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, June 7, 2021. This meeting will be held by way of Zoom telephone conference for the general public. Some members of the school committee will be present in room 142 of the Winter High School, and other members may participate remotely. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Captain Bianco?
Here.
Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Powell?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Present. This meeting may be recorded and may be televised live. Superintendent Howard, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Boncory. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Patty, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, we'll close out the public comment. Any delegates of business this evening, Ms. Howard?
We do not.
Okay, let's move on to the minutes of the May 24, 2021, meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, seconded by Mr. President Boncory. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote on the minutes, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Captain Bianco?
Abstain.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Abstain, I wasn't present at that meeting. Okay, moving on to financial and business procedures. We have warrant SBW 21-21 in the amount of $196,734.94. Can I have a motion on that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Powell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Captain Bianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, we now have payroll warrant. We have two payroll warrants. We'll take them each individual. Payroll warrant SPW 21-23 in the amount of $835,804.60. I'll entertain a motion for that amount.
Motion? Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on SPW 21-22? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Abstain.
Mr. Captain Bianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Abstain.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Abstain. Okay, we have another payroll warrant, SPW 21-23 in the amount of $740,828.60. I'll entertain a motion for that amount.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Any further discussion on the payroll warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please, for the record?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Abstain.
Mr. Captain Bianco?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Abstain. Okay. We have a budget transfer in the amount of $196,734.94.
Excuse me, one second. There's actually three payrolls. There should be one more.
Sorry, payroll warrant SPW 22-24 in the amount of $806,909.59. I will entertain a motion for that payroll warrant for that amount.
I think it's SPW 21.
24. Oh, I'm sorry. 21-24, I apologize, but $806,909.59. Motion by Ms. Swope, seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on that payroll warrant? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Abstain.
Mr. Captain Bianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Abstain.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Abstain. Okay, we have a budget transfer in the amount of $176,956.77. I'll entertain a motion for that amount.
Motion.
Second.
Matucci, seconded by Mr. Captain Bianco. Any further discussion on the budget transfer? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote for the record?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Captain Bianco?
Yes.
Matucci?
Yes.
Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on, we're going to buildings and grounds. Winok has a request in for a year-end event at Miller Field. Does someone want to bring this through that, Patty?
Um, yes, this is just a yearly event that Winok holds. Mr. Fabiano took off the check today, so we have payment for the custodian fees and the site coordinator fees. And as you know, we waived the rental fee for the shift at Miller Field.
Motion through.
Second.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by Ms. Barry? Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Captain Bianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. We're moving on to general functions and reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports this evening? I don't believe so.
Moving on.
And we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Superintendent Howard?
Yes, I'm moving the microphone a little closer so that people can hear me. So I'll start with, um, last week, all of our senior events went off unbelievably. The all-night party that was held in our gymnasium here at the high school was a great event for our students, a great bonding event, a great culminating activity, lots of fun events. Throughout the night, the students behaved unbelievably as usual, and the event went off very well. We had our prom and the promenade out in front of the high school. Our students looked amazing. It was really a nice array of different dress, and they were excited to get to the prom itself. Lots of parents and friends and family out front watching our students as they marched outside the high school doors. They were announced, stopped for a picture, and then got onto the bus, put their masks back on, and proceeded to the Hyatt where they had an incredible night with no issues to report, which is excellent. We also had class night where our students received scholarships in many amounts under $1,000, and some of the larger scholarships take place at graduation. It was a fun night. The students were relaxed and excited to hear who was receiving which award that night, knowing that there was still a whole host of awards and scholarships that would be given out at graduation. And then on to graduation. Being outside this year allowed us to have six family members, which is typically what we have each year when we do graduation inside the school. The difference between being in the gym for graduation and being outside certainly has some moments of nervousness for us because the New England weather is not always cooperative. However, at the last minute, we decided we were going to delay it for about an hour as we watched the hourly weather forecast throughout the day. It was our goal not to have to change it to Saturday for a few reasons. A lot of times, parents are hosting events after graduation. They have friends and family in town. Many people have reservations at restaurants. So we hoped that delaying it an hour would allow the rain to hold off, and it certainly did. It was a great night. Just to, I think, the highlight of the night was just being able to look out, as the superintendent and principal, Mr. Crombie was sitting next to me, we were able to look out at the students and actually see their faces. Last year, we had to predict smiles through their eyes, and that was difficult. There was just a different vibe this year. Folks seemed excited, happy to be there. The rain held off, which was amazing. I think the bugs showed up somewhat towards the end. We had some great presentations and speeches from our students. Mr. Crombie had another epic discussion and story to tell the students that evening. During class night, I had the opportunity to speak to our students on a personal level and share some of my gratitude with them as they were able to help us along the way to get our students just about everything we felt we could have given them and not much less than years past when we didn't have COVID. So it was another great night for our students. Now, we now have our seniors off. They've graduated, and they're no longer in the school. And we're now focusing on transitions of our other students. So transitions moving up, juniors moving up to be seniors, eighth graders moving up to be high school students in grade nine, and then, of course, the transitions from pre-K, uh, pre-K 2 schools, so our second graders are becoming third graders, and our fifth graders at the ATC are becoming middle school students. So lots of activities have been planned, COVID-safe activities and transition ceremonies for those groups of students, and all of that is on our website and being communicated with our families. A quick budget update. I would like to schedule a budget subcommittee meeting for next, probably for early next week so that I can bring the subcommittee up to speed on the current budget. So at this point, we understand from the town side, we are going to receive an allocation of about $650,000. Our budget this year is $23,469,695. For next year, we had asked for an increase of $1,226,945. With COVID times and with budgets and sort of the unpredictability of this year, we are very mindful of the constraints. The budget increase that we've asked for is a level service budget, meaning keeping everything we have this year as we move into next year. We've had some changes with the COVID restrictions being lessened. So although we have, are not receiving the 1.226 million that we believed in the moment that we developed our budget that we were going to need to open the doors next year with a level, with all level services, we have been able to make some adjustments to that. So I think bringing the budget subcommittee back to the table to review all of those adjustments that I'll be recommending to get us to the allocated figure that the town has been able to provide us with. And so that will come, that information will come to the subcommittee, which will then come back to the full committee. And just for general understanding, some of the places that we'll be looking to offset what would be our perceived deficit in a level service budget will be the ESR grants and primarily the ESR 2 grant because those are the funds that we have in our coffers. I think using those funds for a one-time situation will certainly help us maintain a level service budget. But it's important to note that those funds really are the ESR funds, a one-time, one-year allocation. And although it's going to assist us in accomplishing a level service budget for next school year, that money is not coming back again at the end of next school year, to our knowledge. So when we present a budget to the community next year, that gap is going to appear to be wider. So although this year we asked for 1.226 or closer to 1.1227,000, that will be the floor for next year because that is actually what we will be requiring for a level service budget this year. So next year, there will be an increase upon that 1,226,000 because those ESR funds will have disappeared. So more detail on that will come at our budget subcommittee meeting, but will also then be brought back to the full committee, at which time, at our next school committee meeting, I will be asking for the school committee to vote the final budget with the knowledge of how we intend to cover that budget. So the next thing on my agenda is I provided the school committee, thankfully, to, from our high school, has provided us with a list of all of the amazing next steps that our graduates are taking. Many of our students, 115, I believe, 115 of our students out of 144 will be attending a college. I intend to go on to college and have identified that. We have approximately 30 students entering the workforce, and we have a few students, three, who are going to continue on with us in our postgraduate program here at Winter High School. And we also have three students who have chosen to go into the military. So all great places where our students are headed, and whether it be the workforce or whether it be a specific college, a community college, a four-year college, or into the military. So it's always fun to take a peek at where the students do intend to go. I think it's important when you look at this list, which we certainly can publish the names of the colleges where students are attending. That's a snapshot in terms of college acceptances. We have many students, many of our students have been accepted to multiple, multiple colleges, and in the long run have made a decision to pick one out of the many. So I think that's interesting to look at and to be mindful of. Our students going into the military, certainly it's interesting to see their path and be looking forward to their success. And our students entering the workforce, I think that is another personal choice that a lot of our students have made, and it's what is in their best interest. And I am sure many of the students who have chosen to go into the workforce have a path that they want to take that may be different than going on to college. However, it's a path that they have chosen because they know what they really want to do in their life. So I think it is equally as important to recognize that as well. So I thought that list would be interesting for folks to have. We're still working on the start and end times for the schools next year. If you recall, two years ago now, we were in contract negotiations with our teachers' union. And unrelated to the student start and end times, that's something that the school district decides, the superintendent along with the principals, and presents that to the school committee for their understanding. But teachers' start and end times are part of their contract. And two years ago, we agreed to put together a working team to hear from the teachers about what hours they wanted to work. So you have to work a total of seven hours, and they actually have to work around the start and end times that we have determined for our students at each building. Determining those start and end times is not an easy task because you have to balance the traffic in our community and have an understanding that some of our parents have little ones in at least two of our elementary schools, and sometimes, as was the case with myself at one point in time, a child in every school. So all students cannot start school at the same time and get dismissed at the same time because it would be an inability for our parents to be able to scoop up their children at various locations if that would be, that would be the case. With our teaching staff, depending upon where their, um, their times are where they do collaborative work together, there are contract laws for them to be there for 10 minutes before students get to school, but in some cases where they have 35 to 40 minutes by the start and end time. So we're almost done with determining the teacher and agreeing to the teacher's start and end times, which has not been contentious, and it certainly has been a nice process to hear all the creative ways that they want to use that time. And a lot of it is around collecting data on how much, at what time of the day students are willing to access the teacher's support at varying levels. So we're finding with a lot of our students that after-school time for our middle school kids is better than before school for them in most cases. And high school students with after-school athletics, that sometimes becomes a challenge where if a teacher is available for half an hour after school contractually and they are there and available, some of our students sort of get locked out of that if they're in the middle of a sports season. So at the next school committee meeting, I'll be able to let you know what those start and end times are for students as well as staff, and then we'll be able to publish that so our families can start planning how they will be transporting their students to school next year and working out all the kinks of that. The last thing I have on my list this evening is my recommendation for a school business manager. Just to bring you back a little bit, a year ago, right around this time, we were posting for a school business manager based on the retirement of Ms. Susan Eccles. And then COVID hit, and things changed a little bit, and Susan was able to stay on with us an additional year. And we began to go through that process of seeking somebody to come in as a school business manager upon Susan's retirement at the end of this year. So as the committee is aware, in January, I provided you with the resumes of people who had applied for the position. We had gone, I had gone through the resumes, and based on some criteria, selected six potential candidates to interview and set up meetings for those members, for those candidates to come into school. During the month of February and March, a six-person interview committee, which included myself, and I'll speak about the others in a minute, started the process of interviewing during the months of February and March. We conducted the six candidate interviews and took data on the questions that we asked. Each candidate was asked the same number of questions. Sometimes they were asked to expand on their answers, and sometimes they gave us more information that may have presented an additional probing question. So gathering all that data resulted in an aggregate rating of each one of the candidates. And on conclusion of the interview process, we did two interviews per date over a period of, obviously, six people, three separate dates. There were some cancellations which, of interviews, which made us push it out a little bit further. But after the conclusion of that, I followed up with contacting the references of the top two candidates and also held one-to-one meetings with the two candidates that came out on the top. The purpose of that was to further investigate their interest and commitment potential for our school district, to engage in deeper discussion related to the job, our job description and performance expectations that we had. We discussed the potential of a job being offered to them and how they felt about that and if they felt as though they were going to continue to be a candidate. And I also reviewed many questions that each one of the top two candidates had in terms of anything, anything about the position, anything about a deeper dive into the expectations. And it allowed for that personal connection for me to understand each candidate better. Now, that process has been concluded, and we're ready to take the next step. And the next step for me is to present the committee with my recommendation of one of the two finalists for the full committee. Upon the conclusion of my recommendation and your vote and pending the receipt of, and review of Corey and fingerprinting, the candidate, once approved by the school committee, would then proceed on with the onboarding process, including contract negotiations. So this is not a union position. This is an individual contract. So at this time, I'd like to share with the committee that I would like to recommend Mr. Noel Velez to the committee as the Director of Finance and Operations, beginning July 1, 2021. For the past four years, Mr. Velez has served as the Financial Analyst for the Chelsea Public Schools, during which time he has worked side by side with past and current Chelsea Public Schools Business Managers as both an Assistant Business Manager and a Financial Analyst. Mr. Velez received glowing recommendations from Mr. Jerry McHugh, who recently retired and was the longstanding Chelsea Public Schools Business Manager. He had spent a great amount of time working with Noel and mentoring Noel. Noel received additional recommendations and support for his candidacy from Almi Avieta, who is the current Superintendent of the Chelsea Public Schools, who I have oftentimes, I oftentimes work with her because she is part of our five-district partnership. Noel's, she spoke very highly of Noel's knowledge, commitment to his work, communication skills, and his positive and collaborative attitude. Noel's experience in budget management, end-of-the-year reporting, grant management, procurement, transportation, management, special education, special education funding and allocation management, outside contract development and compliance, and food service contract knowledge are all points that were very impressive in my deeper discussion with Mr. Velez. His experience in working with Chelsea City Managers and City Finance Managers and department members to collaborate in the process of developing and advocating for an appropriate school budget and school funding, coupled with his technology skills, I believe will be an asset to the school district. I believe this because our community is also engaging in the hiring of new staff on the town side to manage the town as well as to take care of the town finance department. Mr. Velez is fluent in both English and Spanish, which will also benefit our district as we continue to improve our communication with students and families across all grade levels. Mr. Velez has many additional qualities and experiences that far exceed his initial resume, and the interview committee unanimously agree that his conveyed leadership style, organizational skills, knowledge of school business law and regulations, and his desire to become a visible, present, and interactive member of the community of Winthrop will make him a great addition to our school system. I'd like to take a moment to thank the interview committee. Ms. Powell, a school committee member, school committee chair, vice chair. Ms. O'Connell, our PPS director. Ms. O'Larry, who is our appointed principal of the Art T. Cummings School as of July 1. Ms. Laurie Galvin, who is our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Accountability. Ms. Susan Eccles, who is our retiree. And the former town CFO, Ms. Anna Friedman, for their time, attention, and commitment to this very important process. It was my pleasure to serve on a committee, to serve on the interview committee with this group of professionals. It is without hesitation that I asked the committee to vote to accept my recommendation of Mr. Noel Velez. And that is the end of my superintendent report.
Ms. Howard, would you like us to take out of order the agenda for your recommendation to see if anyone will make a motion to accept your recommendation? Or would you like to wait until we go through the rest of personnel?
Well, considering I jumped right to new business without thinking and included it in my superintendent's report, you may take that out of order if you so choose.
I'll entertain a motion to take that agenda item out of order for the superintendent's recommendation for school business managers. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Swope?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Okay, I'll entertain a motion contingent upon a successful contract negotiation, ratification of contract, that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Noel Velez. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Powell makes the motion. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Excuse me. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Captain Bianco?
You're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Congratulations to Mr. Velez. We look forward to working with you and getting a successful contract ratified.
Thank you. Thank you for taking it out of order, and thank you for catching my aggressive superintendent report conundrum, allowing that to happen. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I apologize. I have to run. I don't see there be any more roll calls on the agenda, so just so you know, I have to run.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Captain Bianco.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to personnel, we have, do we have the appointments, resignations, or retirements?
So yes, appointments, we have none. Resignations, we have a few. Ms. Molly Cronin, who is a seventh-grade ELA teacher here at Winter Middle School. Mr. Daniel Bertrand, who is a middle school ESP. Ms. Simone Dalton, who is an ESP at the Cummings School. Ms. Kelsey Duarte, who is a speech and language pathologist at the middle school. And Ms. Elizabeth Carsley, who is an ESP at the middle school. I'd like to thank them all for the work that they have done in this unprecedented school year, and I will look forward to their exit reports from us. Many of these folks are moving on, either climbing the ladder to do something else or actually literally moving. Retirements, we have one. Ms. Yvonne Senaro? Uh, retirements, we have one. Ms. Yvonne Senaro. Um, Ms. Yvonne Senaro has been an ESP with us for several years. Uh, she has participated in, um, the Parent Advisory Council, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Um, and as somebody who worked directly with Ms. Senaro, um, as well as worked with her, uh, her own children, um, I can't say enough about the commitment, professionalism, um, and, and just overall. She's just a great human. She will be a loss to the public school in terms of the support that she, unwavering support that she has given to each one of our children, uh, with no judgment and no hesitation. So Yvonne will be missed, um, and she has asked to have an approval for her buyback of her sick time upon her resignation. And I wish Yvonne the best, um, and, and you can't hide from me, so might be calling you to see if you want to do some substituting.
Okay, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve the sick day buyback, uh, for Yvonne Senaro.
Motion.
Motion. Seconded by Mr. Boncori. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yeah.
Mr. Boncori?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Do we do postings or leaves of absence?
We do. We have posting for, each year we post the Skype ends well in advance so that our staff can have the opportunity to think about, um, what work they may want to take on next year and our clubs and extracurricular supported activities. So we're posting the middle school Skype ends. We're also posting the ELA position at the middle school, the E-two ESP position, and the speech and language. Also, um, a, a special education teacher at the Athletee Coming School. So all of those postings, um, we would like to get up so that we could, uh, begin the process of interviewing. And at this point, we do not have any reported leave of absence. Thank you.
Under new business, bless you, Mr. Boncori.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Lisa? What's the graduation rate?
So the graduation rate at the moment, um, you can see my numbers right here. I was calculating the total gradu- we graduated, uh, I believe, one hundred percent of our seniors this year with the exception of the, our three students who are, um, receiving, have not actually graduated but are going to continue on with us in our post-grad position. But I would like to double-check with Mr. Crombie to make sure that I haven't missed anyone on this list, and I can clarify that with you to make sure all of our students are listed here as graduating.
And by that you mean those who started four years prior have graduated within four years?
I, I cannot tell you that off the top of my head. I would have to go back and look at the statistics of each one of those students. I wouldn't be able to tell you if every student graduated Friday night, only spent four years in high school, whether it would be here or someone else, but I can certainly get you that information.
Well, the reason I ask is because US News and Will Report just published their data, but their data is from eighteen-nineteenth school year, as always. They're always two years. And so it would be terrific if we could report something like that because we were at ninety-one percent before, in, in that year. You think that we are continuing to make progress on a lot of the stats I read.
That's correct.
That would be so exciting.
To be able to report that. And I, I agree. And it's, it's definitely something that's, um, not a heavy lift to report. It's, I just don't have that directly in front of me, but I certainly, um, can get that back. And I do think from a, from a knowledge base, I think people should hear that.
Yeah, and, you know, because it's college readiness, readiness, math proficiency, et cetera. Everything that US News and Will Report reports on. I think, given what I've heard in the last couple of years, I think we will have made progress on almost every one of those stats. And when you all give a, maybe a final year-end report, if
That would be a point.
we were to take a look at that, or I will put her on it, but it's exciting because I think we're making, um, tremendous progress, so.
I would agree with you on that, and I'd be happy to get that information from the committee for, for a year-end report. I think it would be useful.
Yeah, thanks.
Sure.
Worthy, Chairman. I have three other meetings, uh, with the town tonight, so I have to leave this one.
All right, we just have one more piece of business before we're done. I think it will go pretty quickly. Can you hang on just one minute?
Yeah.
Under new business, the first reading of the substitute professional staff employment policy. I would make a motion that we waive the first reading.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote?
Ms. Barry? Uh, yeah. Mr. Boncori?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Uh, the next unfinished business, we have none. Uh, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Matucci to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope. Any, there was no discussion. Roll, 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 please.
Ms. Barry?
Yeah.
Mr. Boncori?
Yes.
Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Thank you, President Boncori, for taking that.
Thank you.